Welcome, everyone. Thank you for your patience. We're just getting the video up. We can start with the Pledge of Allegiance for those who would like to stand and who'd like to sit. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. And Commissioner Ivanka, would you like to lead us? Thank you.
Repeat after me. We offer you peace.
We offer you peace.
We offer you friendship.
We offer you friendship.
We offer you love.
We offer you love.
We hear your needs.
We hear your needs.
We see your beauty.
We see your beauty.
We feel your feelings.
We feel your feelings.
We are all smart in our own way.
We are all smart in our own way.
We honor that in you.
We honor that in you.
Let us work together.
Let us work together. Thank you very much. So, welcome to Tuesday, December 11th, School Board Meeting. First on the agenda, are there any items to remove from the consent agenda? Commissioner Fisher.
Thank you, Chair. Well, I wish to remove the November 13th School Board Meeting minutes from the consent agenda.
Any other commissioners?
Are we making changes to the agenda as well or just consent?
We're doing just consent agenda. All right. So then, I would like someone to make a motion to amend the agenda by removing item number D from the consent agenda.
I so move.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
On adopting the agenda.
Excuse me.
Consent agenda. Thank you. Any abstentions? All right. Thank you. The motion carries. Next would be the approval of the agenda. Does anyone have any changes they'd like to make to the agenda? Commissioner Fisher.
Thank you, Chair. Well, I move to remove Executive Session Item Number 11 from the agenda.
So noted. I make a motion to... Anyone else?
Second.
Second. Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Whip. All right, then.
Vote?
No discussion on the agenda motion.
Should we vote on it?
Yes. So, let's take a vote. All those in favor of adopting the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The motion carries. Thank you. Next on the agenda is public comment. Commissioner Fisher. Thank you.
Thank you. First up is Terry Lassard. On deck is Christina Erickson. Was that... Might be from last time. You want to talk again?
I think it was last.
You did great.
He controls.
Christina, which one is this?
I think it's now Kate Trombley.
Kate Trombley.
Kylie.
Kylie Trombley. Up on deck is Andrew Styles.
Hi.
Hi.
I want to show you something because I don't want to forget anything, but hello. My name is Kylie Trombley and I'm a junior at Burlington High School. I'm here today to talk about bathroom accessibility at my school. I have Lyme-induced Crohn's disease, which causes me to need to use the restroom more often than some, and that's why this matter is so important to me. Though many students may use restrooms less often than me or other students with Crohn's or colitis, the bathroom conditions and accessibility all around the school affect everyone. For example, before Thanksgiving break, I noticed there was a stall in the Girls A Building bathroom that was out of order. It continues to be out of order today. Around that same time, the private bathrooms in E Building were linked to a foul smell that displaced classes and they were shut down. There is no date in sight for the bathrooms to be fixed and reopened. Another example is the girls locker room bathrooms. There are three stalls, none of which are usable for various reasons. Additionally, on November 29th, a stall door in D Building, a bathroom that already only has two stalls, was removed. There is now only one stall in that bathroom, which is problematic because this is the restroom where people from both E Building and D Building go since the shutting down of the E Building bathrooms. Most recently, gender-neutral or private bathrooms are being closed to students. Originally, it was just the E Building bathrooms and one D Building bathroom labeled, but now D Building private bathrooms are covered with numerous signs saying they're for staffed-only and students should go to F Building. The other day, I was gone from class for 20 minutes looking for a bathroom to use because the closest bathrooms were either being used, broken, clogged, or so filthy they were unusable. While gone, I ran into two other students with the same problem. There is already a limited amount of bathrooms at BHS for the amount of students it holds, but that is not what I'm asking to be fixed. I'm simply asking that the problems we have be fixed and cleaned frequently enough to be usable. My family has contacted the school administration about both the decreasing functionality of the stalls and the staff-only signs. We received an email back from administration stating that the signs on the door help staff control who uses the bathroom and differentiate who has a specific need. I personally have a five-for-four plan and a specific need, and I have still been stopped twice trying to use these bathrooms. We are still waiting on a response about functionality of stalls. In summary, because I'm aware the layout of BHS is confusing and not everyone is familiar, I'm hoping you could help with the recent decrease in functional and accessible bathrooms at BHS. Students have the right to private, clean, and functional bathrooms. Thank you.
Andrew Styles, on deck. How about you, Stuart?
Welcome, Andrew.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Andrew Styles. I'm a fifth grade teacher at Edmonds Elementary, and I represent the educators of the Burlington Education Association. First, I would like to thank you for reversing some of the cuts to our elementary schools at the last November Board Meeting. I would also like to thank District Administration for following up with our extensive advocacy over the last few years concerning kindergarten paraeducators as being an integral toward working to bridge the achievement and opportunity gaps that students begin school with. I'm proud to represent the educators of this district. As educators, though, we must all reflect on our practice and work to improve our instruction based on the needs of our students. As any educator in this district can tell you, District Administration has been failing our students by not providing comprehensive, well-thought-out professional development for instruction that teachers and paraeducators give in the classroom. Differentiated support for teachers is now being provided as part of a new coaching model that the district has implemented this year. As this program has begun to blossom, the coaches have developed a research-based program based on the coaching cycle of identifying a goal, choosing instructional strategies, and implementing the practice in our educators' classrooms. They have become experts on finding resources and knowing the latest high-impact strategies for classroom instruction and differentiation. I am getting ready to engage in a round of the coaching model with the embedded coach at Edmonds Elementary School. My focus is going to be to improve my differentiation during math class. She and I are currently researching the latest effective teaching practices. She will observe me teaching a lesson. We will meet to discuss ways that it can be improved, and then I'll implement a practice and go through that process with her again. This is an example of my instructional coach customizing her support based on my students' needs this year. She will not only research with me... Research this with me, she's also willing to try the practice out herself. That level of support is crucial for all of the educators in this district. More importantly, not only are the coaches working with experienced teachers, they are actively supporting new educators in our district. As has been endlessly cited, many teachers leave within their first five years of service. What we've found in our district is that new teachers have needed the additional supports that are now being provided by instructional coaches, fitting into our mission of recruiting and retaining the best educators for Burlington's children. To address the achievement gap, it is important that we provide our students with the differentiated supports they need by having access to high-quality teachers, paraeducators, and interventionists. We must also provide our educators with the differentiated supports that they need by allowing the embedded instructional coaching program to flourish as well. It is our hope that both programs can help us to really begin to close the achievement gap in the early years. Thank you.
Emily Stewart, on deck. Is she in the link?
Hi. First, I want to thank you for your service to the students and families of Burlington. My name is Emily Stewart, and I have been teaching kindergarten at IAA for six years. I would like to share some information with you and ask you to reinstate K-PARs. When I started teaching kindergarten, there was another trained adult with the class at all times. Not only was it amazing to have another set of hands to tie shoes and zip coats and wipe noses, but there was a para to meet with a small groups of children during our literacy block, or to support a student that needed to take a break, or to provide differentiated instruction during our math stations. I was thrilled to see the endless number of ways the paras supported the students' emotional and academic needs. My second-year teaching, and every year since, we have not had this support, and the difference is staggering. Since we lost our K-PARs, I have been advocating for their reinstatement. In 2014, I worked with Dove Stucker, fellow BSD teacher and parent, to compile classroom data that documented the benefits of paras. I also met with the school board to share concerns and wrote multiple letters. Frustrated with the lack of action, I decided to join the preschool strategic planning committee. For two years, I heard compelling arguments from other K-teachers and various service providers about the urgent need to have K-PARs reinstated. This action would be a great step towards closing the achievement gap. K-PARs are vital to our students for a variety of reasons. They help create a safe learning environment. Many students that enter kindergarten get physically aggressive, both with peers and teachers. I have been kicked, scratched, bitten, punched, slapped, and so many other things. So have my kids. There have been moments of terror when I have to decide whether or not to run after a child heading into the street or to stay with my other 21 students. This should never be the case. With the full-time K-PARs, there's always another adult in the classroom to help create the safe learning environment we want for all of our students. Students with special needs are not always identified before students enter K. It takes a lot of time and effort to document the need for more support for these students as we start the initial evaluation process. Our English language learners need more support. We have a step program to support the needs of new Americans. However, this is not offered to K-students. Instead, our district is throwing some of our most vulnerable learners into the mainstream classroom unsupported. There is a rise in students with mental health needs and exposure to trauma. With our social workers cut and school counselors stretched thin, we are not able to meet the needs of all students. To make matters worse, many students that were receiving Howard Center family-based services graduate out of this program upon turning five, with the idea that they will transition to school-based services. But our social workers can only take on a few new clients each year. The number of student referrals and suspensions for K-students was drastically increased when we removed K-PARs. With K-PARs, it is a much more appropriate adult-to-child ratio, 1:22 versus 1:11. The transition to kindergarten is a huge step for young learners. The range of needs and the skills students enter kindergarten with are vastly different. Everyone benefits from the reinstatement of K-PARs because students will enter first grade and the subsequent grades more prepared to be successful in school. Concentrating our efforts on early intervention is a cost-effective strategy. I have so many more stories to share, and I urge you to get in touch with me if you have any further questions about why our district desperately needs this support. Better yet, please come visit my classroom any day at 12:45 and help us get ready for recess. Thank you, and I will be sending you my full letter to members of the board.
Up on deck, Beth Fialko.
My name is Aziza Malik, and I have been a fourth and fifth grade teacher at Champlain Elementary for the last nine years. I'm speaking today to ask for your support of instructional coaches. Instructional coaches have been essential to my growth as an educator. They have helped me broaden my content knowledge, hone my instructional skills, and have provided inspiration and support to keep my teaching creative and innovative. As an elementary classroom teacher, we are asked to teach all subject areas. This requires us to learn a lot of content. The coaches have supported me in deepening my understanding in all subject areas. They have provided me with professional development, modeled in my classroom, and observed my teaching to ensure that I'm getting to the essential standards. In addition, instructional coaches are all experienced educators. This means that they know what it's like to be in the classroom. They not only understand content, but understand instructional strategies. Just recently, I was consulting with a coach about how I felt my math partnerships were feeling ineffective. After a few minutes of talking, I had some new ideas that I implemented the very next day with great success. I've also used coaches more formally, participating last year in a lesson study with my grade-level team, where we created a lesson together, then observed each other, and gave feedback. This experience, co-teaching with a team, was very powerful and changed my teaching. Coaches also provide inspiration and support to keep my teaching creative and innovative. The coaches are always learning about the latest research on best practices, and as I said before, they're also experienced teachers who have incredible ideas about how to engage students in learning. They are also willing to support teachers who want to try out ideas that weave together content and instruction in new ways. Coaches have supported me in all of my favorite units of studies and have created memorable experiences that bring learning to life for all of our students. We've been able to do things like a live public poetry reading at a local cafe. We've used computer coding to solve complex math problems. We've been able to bring the next-generation science standards to life through building solar ovens, testing water quality of Englesby Brook, and figuring out how the Burlington Earth Clock works. All of these experiences would not have been possible without the coaches. We're so lucky now to have embedded instructional coaches at our schools. When I was a new teacher, what I remember most about those first few years was how hard it was to not have a mentor teacher. It was difficult to know what to do when I struggled. This has now changed with the embedded coaches as well as the new mentor-coach position. I'm so happy to see the new teachers now have someone to work with to support them socially and emotionally at the start of their career. It is great that they don't have to struggle like I did and now have someone they can turn to when they need it. Once again, I'd like to say I hope you support the embedded instructional coaching model and give it time to see the effects that it has on student learning. Thank you.
Welcome, Beth.
Thank you. I'm Beth Fialko Casey. I happen to teach at the high school, but I'm here tonight to read the words of Kara Quinn, who is a longtime teacher at Edmonds Elementary who could not be here today. So, I'm going to read this in first person, but it's not me. But I agree with everything she's saying. "I am a first-grade teacher at EES and a 15-year veteran. What I know for sure about my teaching is that I thrive on collaboration. I have actively sought out opportunities for collaboration throughout my 14 years in Burlington. This year, in an effort to pursue my desire to be collaborative, I have participated in the coaching cycle twice already. Each time, I have found it to be extremely rewarding and productive. My school coach, Shannon Rush..." Shout out. "...has encouraged me to be reflective and responsive in my practice. She has given me inspiration and permission to change that which is not working. She is supportive and realistic and provides me with strategies I can easily implement in my classroom. She is an advocate for me and for my students in my class. I have also had the opportunity to work with her as a participant in grade-level meetings, staff meetings, school leadership, and math leadership meetings." It's a lot of meetings. "In every instance, she is willing to work alongside teachers and staff members in both a leadership role and a collegial role. She is effective in both roles and is an integral addition to our staff and school. I am highly supportive of the continuation of the coaching model. I believe it has the potential to increase collaboration, reflection, and positive action in our classroom and schools. The coaches directly impact the staff by empowering them with the skills, strategies, and experiences that in turn empower our students to be successful. Thank you."
Would anybody else like to speak in public comment?
Hi, welcome, Ann.
I'm also speaking on behalf of someone else, so first-person as well, but not me. Danielle Weidman, K-teacher at Edmonds Elementary, says, "This is my 17th year in the district, and I'm amazed at the changes in our demographics and socioeconomic status of the kids in our district. The two years that we had general classroom paras were two of my best years. With 22 students in the para, I was able to meet the needs of more students. I had someone to help tie shoes, zip coats, and put on snow pants. I had someone to help put out fires while I was teaching the lesson. Someone to help the handful of kids who had never had preschool, and this was their first school experience. I had someone to help conference with the kids at math, reading, and writing times. There were extra eyes, ears, and hands at recess time. The needs of kindergarten-age children is huge, not just for academics, but for social and emotional support. The first year in school ought to be treated as important as it gets. For children to grow and thrive in kindergarten, they need few very simple things. They need care and attention from their teacher and educational support professionals. They need developmentally appropriate activities that engage them as young learners, and they need time to process information and to move between activities. This can only be a successful goal if K-PARs are put in place."
Thank you.
Would anybody else like to speak in public comment?
Okay, then we'll move on to Board Reflection of Public Comment. Would any commissioner like to reflect? Commissioner Carrick.
Superintendent O'Bang, it's my understanding that we just transitioned to the embedded coaching model last year, but there seems to be heightened concern about it. Is there some planned change?
Testing. Testing, testing. You hear me?
Yes, yeah.
Okay. Yes, we did just implement it and transition from last year. There are no plans to change. We're going to stay the course, and our curriculum department are putting in measures so we can collect the data over a couple of years if the intervention is supporting our progress or not.
So, we can assure the public that the embedded coaching model is not changing?
We have no plans to change it.
Good question. Thank you, Commissioner Carrick. Any other commissioner? Commissioner Donkey?
I appreciate hearing from teachers about the embedded coaching model because I know that's a new model this year, and some of us are curious because I believe there's, perhaps, including the behavioral coaches, there's at least 18 or 19 coaches in the district now. So, we heard from some brand-new teachers at Champlain via email, and then it was great to hear the stories tonight. I also appreciate hearing about behavioral coaches. I think this evening was only instructional coaches. The other thing was that I appreciated hearing from Emily Stewart on the importance of reinstating kindergarten paras in our classrooms. I personally think our kindergarten classrooms should be capped at 16 students. However, I'm not sure that our budget's going to allow for that, but definitely... And we got a big document from Dove Stucker, who did a lot of research on this, and I will be supporting reinstating kindergarten paras in our classrooms.
Commissioner Whip.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Well, I just wanted to comment and thank Kylie, the student who's speaking about the bathrooms. I want to assure you on behalf of the Board and the Chair, and I'm sure the district leadership, that we'll be working with Principal Green and our Facilities Committee to attend to that immediately.
Great. Any other commissioners? Thank you. We'll move on. Thank you, public, for coming up to speak, and faculty and staff, and community members. Next is the student commissioners... Excuse me. Chair's report. The Chair's report, I wanted to thank the Board and the senior directors, the system leaders that are here tonight. We apologize, last month's meeting was extremely long and you waited, so I'll be brief. We thank you for the time spent in your budget proposal analysis and the work that you put forth to determine and had your faculty and staff collaborate with you on the needs of your schools. We spent a special meeting as a Board going over that information with Superintendent O'Bang and Director Nathan Lavery, and we will meet again next Tuesday for another special Board meeting to go over budget items and address that moving into January and February. But thank you very much for your hard work. I wanted to acknowledge that on the time. Moving on to the Chair's report. I mean, excuse me, the student commissioners' report. Isaac Genneman. Thank you.
Oh, mic would be good, too. At the high school right now, we're beginning the winter sports season, which is always an exciting time of the year, and I believe girls basketball game has their first game tonight right here. So, if any of the members of the public get bored with policy and procedure, head down the hall and check out the game. And besides that, right now in the high school, we are gearing up to go... Well, around the district, we're gearing up to go on our winter break, and as much as we all love school, it's always an exciting time to take some time off and enjoy the winter weather.
Thank you, Commissioner... I mean, thank you, student rep, Isaac Genneman. Next on the agenda is committee reports. Up first would be Commissioner Pillsbury with Finance and Facilities. Thank you.
I am co-chair of Facilities and Finance with Chair Wolf, so if Ms. Alaisian, please add to what I have to say. Our last meeting was on Thursday, November 29th. We are basically focusing at this meeting on the facilities, and we continue to discuss the projects of the Edmonds renovation that's currently going on, and the plans are, the expectations are that students will be able to use the cafeteria after February break. I know that seems a little bit unrealistic to some of our leaders in the school, but we are assured that we can do that. So, it seems like it's going on time, and will be completed on time. We also discussed Phase One, Phase Two of the Edmonds project, and then also the Hunt project, which will be going out for bid later in the spring. And as part of that, we were discussing the prequalifications for the construction companies that we would be asking them to... Basically, to apply, to be able to bid when we send out the bid, and we appreciate people's feedback on the prequalifications that we sent out to all Board members, and so that seems to have good citizen input, and that will be going out. However, it is advertised in the Free Press and various posts to notify construction companies that we are looking for companies to apply so that we can pre-qualify them in order for them to be able to bid later on in the spring. We are... The co-chairs of this committee are meeting weekly with Mr. Spalding, Marty Spalding, and Nate Lavery, and others, and the architect and his workers on getting the BHS project. The one thing that we feel that's got a good start is getting input from the staff here at this building, and we hope that if there's still staff that haven't given their input filling out that survey, please do that so we can get as much input, ideas from our staff at this building as possible, faculty and staff. Our meetings are second and third Thursdays of the month, whenever there's not a holiday on the second time, second meeting date. We have scheduled at 5:00 at Champlain School. We want it to be consistent so people can be aware of where we're meeting.
I would follow up with the survey that went out to BHS last week that was due back this past Monday, and I'll be connecting with Director Rasico of BTC, and we have that survey that will be ready to go out at the end of this week. So, thank you for your report. Next would be Policy Governance Committee Report. Commissioner Wick.
Thanks, Chair. Well, we've got some first and second reading items on the agenda tonight, some of which the superintendent will be introducing. So, that's all, and we've been meeting regularly, first and third Thursdays, at Champlain Elementary School. We've been meeting at 5:30, but we are changing that on a bit of an ad hoc basis to enable more folks to attend, and I'll keep you all posted. We're trying to figure out the optimal start time. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Wick. Next would be Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee Report. Commissioner Carrick or Ivanka?
I can start, but others should feel free to chime in. So, we were... We met on an off day, so we were lucky to have Director Special Ed Laura Nigent at the meeting. It gave us an opportunity to speak about special education needs, which we don't have enough opportunities to learn about. So, we learned a lot. I guess some highlights, we got into a great discussion about needs at the high school for kids with special ed needs who can be into school up to eight years, but if we could meet some of their needs just by having a room where they could learn life skills in the kitchen, and laundry, and taking kids to the store, and navigating town... It gave us an opportunity to speak about special education needs, which we don't have enough opportunities to learn about. So we learned a lot. I guess some highlights, we got into a great discussion about needs at the high school for kids with special ed needs who can be into school up to eight years, but if we could meet some of their needs just by having a room where they could learn life skills in the kitchen, and laundry, and taking kids to the store, and navigating town, it would help kids move through their education time more quickly. Then, we also heard that there's a bubble of special needs at the high, at the middle school level, and there's a real dearth of resources there, so that was an issue. It was just a very, I would encourage people to read the minutes, they're very comprehensive, and there's a lot of good information just about like that Laura shared with us about the life of students with special ed needs. We touched on, there was a lot of engagement from the public, there was a member of Parents and Youth for Change who attended, and a couple other parents. We talked a lot about, like, SAPTO hired the Peace and Justice Center to do their own disrupting racism training for the PTO, so a Hunt parent was there, it was nice cross-fertilization on the opportunity for PTOs to do that. We also talked again about the Hunt Dance and some of the plans that Bonnie Johnson-Aitin is going to be working with Sparks to implement and address some skill needs there. I don't want to go on and on, so Monica, if you want to highlight anything else, there's like five pages of notes, so a lot of stuff to read.
Great. Thank you very much. Thank you, Commissioner Curry. Next is Curriculum Personnel. Commissioner Curry and Awal.
Kathy.
Excuse me, I skipped over Community Engagement. Sorry, we can go with Curriculum Personnel.
Well, Kathy Awal and I are co-chairs of the Curriculum Personnel Committee, and the minutes I'll go over were the ones we had in last month's meeting. We meet the Monday immediately before the board meeting, so we met last night again on a different subject, but last month we had Nikki Fuller talk about the personnel and hiring, staffing overview. She gave us a staffing overview of her department and some of the difficulties that they're having this year with the transition to all the electronic data that's happening as an ongoing system. We talked about the hiring and the numbers of people that they deal with, and how difficult it is to get the paraprofessionals filled, and all the positions, there are over 1,300 positions in the district that they oversee. We have some questions of Nikki about coaching, about the equity consultant, the grants, the consultants, mentor training. The questions are asked and answered in the minutes if you want to look at them. We talked about equitable compensation, which is something that's kind of all over the place in the district, and Director Fuller seeks information to make sure that the compensation scale is equitable throughout the district, and that's in the pipeline, I guess, coming out this year. We talked a lot about retention issue, although we didn't talk about climate as an issue regarding teacher retention, but it was more like environmental conditions for new teachers when they're here, and the welcoming environment of the district, and improvements that could be made to that. We talked a little bit about bias training. She showed us how to find the list of employees for all the schools because it was a little bit obscure how to find that on the website, and we did talk about the transfers, involuntary transfers within the district, and Director Fuller mentioned that it doesn't often happen. And we've had some feedback about that item in the minutes that we would like to further investigate. I guess the question is, what does it mean by saying that involuntary transfers are, what's the meaning of the word "often," I guess? So I would like to pursue that a little bit more. And we talked about RIFs also, and the fact that RIF rules are contractual, and there are many different contracts in the district, so the RIF rules vary according to the contracts. We came to adjournment at 8:45, and again, we meet, did I say this at the beginning? We meet on every Monday right before the board meetings at SA Community Room. Kathy, I don't know, is anything else?
Commissioner Awal.
Okay.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Fisher, for waiting. Community Engagement is next.
Thank you, Chair Wool. So, first update is around the Early Ed Task Force, which was an idea that came out of the community, one of the community engagement meetings. So Commissioner Gulick unfortunately can't be here tonight, but they've met twice, they have another meeting upcoming. The first meeting had almost 40 people attend, so there's a serious engagement, or there was a serious need for engagement or desire. They formed a more narrow group, a working group, and they're going to use that larger group to provide feedback, so I think that's off to a great start. Commissioner Gulick and I also did live at 5:25 the CCTV show recently, and gave a general update on a number of subjects. We did ask fellow board members to volunteer for future sessions, did not get any response, so we will be more actively recruiting board members, but we will, Commissioner Gulick and I talked about some ways to make it a little more comfortable for people. It is a little weird to be in the studio by yourself with some cameras, so we'll help you. So the Community Engagement Committee did meet on the 29th of November. We talked about a couple things, had some great participation and discussion. The first item was around the role of the Community Engagement Committee, so I want to repeat what I've said before. The Community Engagement Committee is not the sole mechanism to engage the community, not for the board and not for the district. Everyone should be engaging with the community. We're here to guide strategy and tactics. I'm going to send out a toolkit or framework, I forget what I called it, which can help you and the district staff. If you have something, you say, oh, how should we engage, what are some ideas to engage the community, just a way, a toolkit for everyone. One of the topics when we were talking about the role was around an open forum for the community. So lots of times the community comes here and does public comment, and we all know how challenging that is as a way to actually have, it's not a discussion, right? It's talking at, and then we reflect back at. So what we're going to try is have an open forum at all the Community Engagement Committee meetings, and that is, community members can bring any topic that they want and have a true discussion with board members. One of the concerns that was raised is, is just having a discussion with Commissioner Gulick and I is not the same as having a discussion with the board. So I'm asking for your help. Number one, to help publicize this new opportunity for true discussion and engagement, and number two, to attend the meetings, the community meetings, when you can. We are going to try and move the meeting around the district, and not just at the schools someone suggested, but really bring the board to where people are that we want to engage in. So stay tuned for some more details. We're just going to try new things as a way to reach out to the community and really have some good discussions. One thing that came out of, we did actually have an open forum, was pleased to ensure, or looking to ensure that the DHS design work involves staff, community, and students, which Commissioner Pillsbury spoke about, and they had a great idea that we should engage the middle school students who are actually going to be there in the new school.
I read that in your minutes.
So the other big discussion we had was around engaging parts of the community that the school board usually doesn't hear from, right? So we've had this discussion a bunch of times. I challenge you to read the minute, or not challenge you, I welcome you to read the minutes. Lots of good ideas came out of there, and we're going to continue to work that. I'm going to really try and figure out some ways to bring the board to where people are, and Infinite, and I forget the other woman's name from PYC who was there, had some, say again, Corrali? Corrali, I think her name was? Yeah. So they had some really good ideas, and we'll continue to work that thread.
Thank you, Commissioner Fisher. Superintendent O'Bang, next on the agenda, superintendent's report.
Thank you. I'd like to invite Director Lavery to come up, and also I'm going to invite some of my colleagues, leaders, colleagues, you've got a couple of seats here, if you want to come, and don't be shy. Can you hear me on this? Okay. We're at the stage where we're going to, this is really our really, oh, yeah, I'm going to reverse, I know we're in policies first, I'm going to start with the budget piece first because we have staff here and I want to be able to send them off. Yeah. So this is really the first pass you're going to get around the budget. We've had some conversations with the board, special meetings around helping to build the budget, and we're now starting to try to consolidate and bring things together. There's still a number of informational pieces needed in order to put into the budget. There's still decisions that we require from the board, and there's still some consolidation that has to happen, but we try to put a package together, at least start the conversation. Oh, thank you.
Yeah, much.
All right. Good chance.
Thank you.
We put a package together, and hopefully we can continue our conversation next week as well. So we are going to go through, I want to really focus, even though the PowerPoint that we have here goes through a lot of the things that we've talked about previously, I want to try to shift to the consolidation of investments, because I think that's going to take, that'll be weeks and weeks of conversations, the board, so rather get to that piece and introduce that and start those conversations. So we won't spend a lot of time on some of the other areas, because we will revisit them again every time we have a board meeting, and we can sort of highlight the pieces that are now updated, okay? With that, I'm going to turn over to our director, Executive Director of Finance.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So as Yama mentioned, a number of the slides that we've kept in this presentation, we're just going to roll through to start today, but when it's up online, we just felt it was important to have folks who may not have seen previous presentations have a little bit more continuity, but I'm going to skip some of that stuff in the interest of time and not be repetitive, so Bonnie, if you could just start clicking through some slides here, these will kind of look familiar, but you don't need to spend a lot of time looking at them. I think one more. Okay, perfect, stop there. So one of the things that I wanted to start this evening with was just providing the board with some of the key budgetary assumptions that are going into my work constructing what I would call, in essence, a current services budget. So this is our attempt to reflect what it would cost to continue doing the work that we're doing right now before we discuss any sort of new investments or programmatic changes. One of our requirements in our policies is to disclose the assumptions that are going into our budget, and so those are now up on the screen. One of them, I took from the board's retreat that we had down at BD, or the meeting down at BD, where there was discussion of how to apply the FY '18 surplus. That's something, again, that we can change, but based on the discussion and hearing an appetite for some amount of that money going toward operating and also reserving some of it for the purposes of contingency, I'm beginning with the assumption of essentially splitting it in half. And beyond that, you can see there's assumptions about wages, health insurance, other insurances, utilities, supplies, that sort of thing, and I think it's important to note up at the top as well, I put the most, one of the most recent inflation, month-over-month inflation figures up there so that people can just kind of have a, can put some of those numbers in context in terms of how they're changing versus the general increase in the price level. So anyone have any questions specifically about the assumptions before we move on? I see a couple. I won't spend a lot of time on it, but we probably won't make it back to it otherwise.
I just had a question about the assumption around health insurance increases, premium increases. I thought that number was 10% last time we talked, is that?
No, it was, I don't, I mean, if I said 10%, I might have been speaking in broad general terms, but the actual number is something like 11 and change is the official request that VHI filed for the change in rates for the plan that the vast majority of employees are on. So I might, you know, in the interest of rounding, I put 12%, but that's probably one of the things on this list that is the least kind of estimated and the most based in an actual number that we've been told to expect.
I actually remember it being 13% earlier than that. My question was, what does that translate into dollar amount? And then, secondly, why is there a 10% increase in special ed tuition and service costs?
So I don't have the dollar amount, but that's one of the things that we will determine once we go through, we're working on updating the health insurance enrollments, we've just done open enrollment, so there's going to be a movement in both the actual premium cost for plans, but also in terms of the numbers of people that are enrolled in each plan, so that's work that's underway right now. So I don't know that, but when it's all said and done, I could probably ballpark it for you anyway. The special education cost is an important one. You might recall, if you've looked at the routine variance report, past few years, I've highlighted that is an issue of particular pressure in the budget this year. We experienced a significant increase over what we had expected to have to budget in that area, and so the assumption here is that it's going to grow significantly again. That is admittedly an assumption that we can change, it's not based on an exact number of students that have changed or anything like that. Again, it's just a reflection of the recent trend and not wanting to be in a position where we have budget problems because we didn't adequately budget for that. Okay, if we could move on to the next slide, and, yeah, do you want to do the criteria slide?
Sure, I can do that. As the chair mentioned, we did have an opportunity to engage with the board, a session around budget, and that was most informative because we went away with a lot of insights around where the board is looking to take the district and our schools. And so these are some highlights based on the budget criteria exercise we did, just to refresh people's memories, and these are things that we've shared and we've kind of keeping in the back of our minds as we move forward in our process, so, and a lot of the items here very much coincide with what our systems leaders came up with, so you'll see the next slide, the correlation there. But the board did highlight early learning, opportunities for higher achievers, support for restorative practices, work around the achievement gap, social-emotional learning, and a lot of the comments, and pieces that we got was very student-centered. So wanted to sort of acknowledge that and let people know that, you know, the board had a role in sort of defining where the criteria goes, and we're using that as some of our basis in terms of decision-making as we move forward to make recommendations. The next piece, this is the work out of our systems leaders, and we've been able to sort of crystallize this in the presentations, you'll see, we've tried to earmark some of the folk I that systems leaders are focused on, and you can see the commonality with the board values as well, too, around focusing on early learning and interventions, which is key for us in terms of improving total student achievement, we started at early ages, and then the achievement gap piece, social-emotional, once again, restorative practices in alignment with strategic goals, and of course, we have to consider any items that are federal or state mandates. So as you see our budget process, we recount it for anything that we must do in the budget already, so we ensure that whatever budget that we come forward with, we're able to comply with any of those mandates. Okay? All right. So before I move forward into this process, I wanted to have our administrators share a little bit around their rationale and the philosophy and how we've kind of tried to shepherd this budget process to bring to the board, and I think you have.
Hi, thank you. What I think is important to highlight is if you see at this table right here, you see three district principals at the table, and this is something that you will see more and more as we work together for system alignment in this district. I can't tell you how honored I have been to be part of this process, to work with these people. They're a smart, capable, intelligent, just thoughtful group, and I'm so happy to work with them. We have a common vision. There are things that every principal hopes for, whether you have students arriving in kindergarten, or whether you have students arriving in sixth grade, or whether you have students arriving in ninth grade. One of the goals, one of the most important things is that they arrive prepared, because we have a program in place for them, but if those students are not prepared for that program, we have to shift, we have to adjust, and it is very difficult. So what does this rely on? It relies on us having faith and confidence that the level prior to their arrival to us has prepared the students. What does that mean? What does that look like? We have decided that we have to trust each other and leave behind the siloed approach that we've used in the past where each school is just considering its own issues or its own curric- own curriculum outside of alignment from pre-K through twelve. We have decided to come to the table to shed that and leave that in the past, and it has taken a commitment, and we are happy to say that that commitment has been fulfilled. Our executive leadership team has provided us with the forum to have these types of conversations in regard to district alignment. No more will we make budget and curriculum decisions in isolation, as all resources should go towards supporting and nurturing our students to fulfill a larger vision. And what does that mean? We want all students pre-K through twelve to fulfill the mission of the Burlington School District. Specifically, we seek to graduate students who value different cultures, engage with the community, communicate effectively, think creatively, skillfully solve problems, and achieve at their highest academic, intellectual, and personal potential. The community of Burlington City, school district leaders have collectively identified priorities that align across grades pre-K through twelve to work towards this goal. We have identified the resources needed to support the academic, social, and emotional needs of all our learners. The following criteria drove our budget process, request process, focus on early learning and interventions that maximize personal and academic growth potential, align BSD graduate expectations across grades pre-K through twelve, make a significant impact on student achievement and well-being, solve a problem that has been ongoing and not addressed, achieve a high return on our investment, align with the BSD strategic goals, and increase the number and diversity of students participating in challenging academic programs such as advanced placement courses, and close the achievement gap. And as mentioned by Superintendent Obeng, as part of this process, we will be happy to share and occasionally join these meetings to share what we take from our meetings as we continue to align. I already have, for example, meetings or a meeting to set up the agenda as I work with the middle school team in regard to how we further align the math curriculum. So this is ongoing, this is about curriculum, and this is about how we invest our resources as part of this district. So thank you very much.
Thank you all, on behalf of our systems leaders.
So just in quick summary, so you can see that there's a lot of thought been given aligned with your mission, vision, and our strategic goals, and there's also some longitudinal thinking and planning that's happening. So when you see these proposals, it's not without a lot of deep thought in how we can bring our mission and vision to reality in our schools, and we're accessing our best experts. So moving on, on the slide there, you see a number there of four point three million, so you will see that level of investments today, and, but you also notice that in the first statement that this is the starting point. This is what we're bringing to the board based on the community consultations, the board information, and our staff input, and so we've tried to package it in a way that represents the high criterias, but also be inclusive in representing the voices, and we know that this is just the beginning, start, but it gives us a place to start, and some decisions will eventually have to be made in terms of moving forward. Yeah, okay, so let's move on. Okay, so the first category I want to talk about, so you'll see the slides are packaged with our three strategic goals, and the first one I want to speak to is inclusive teaching and learning. And under this inclusive teaching and learning, we've been able to pull out the proposals under specific focus areas that were identified, and so this graphic illustrates the achievement gap priority, and you'll see, and I'm not going to go through and explain every single one, but I will have staff maybe pick one or two things that they want to highlight, but it gives you an opportunity to see the breadth and the focus of the work around the strategies. So on this achievement gap priority, there's supports for PLP and proficiency-based learning coordination around that, there's supports there for EL teachers that came through, there's some supports for BHS, additional course, selective course offerings, and we heard this both from board level and of course from our staff in terms of being able to give that support. Horizons, you know, I can't recall the last time we had a investment that we invest in horizons, and this was significant because when we're talking about the achievement gap, many of the students fall into those categories, and if Laura was close by, I'd ask her to just speak to that one in particular, if you'd like Laura, quickly, and then, but I thought this was great, that we're looking at the whole picture now, right? We're looking at, you know, BTC, looking at on-top, horizons, and how does it all fit with the planning? So this will be a good example.
So horizons is a program that is intended to be similar to the typical high school environment, but it does serve a large chunk of kids with disability as well, more than is typical in high school. We, as Yama said, we haven't increased any staffing there in quite some time, but what's really significant about that is this is a small environment, and, you know, we have kids that struggle with being in this large school, and so this is the function of that program, and honestly, it is an outstanding program with kids who are preparing for college. It is not a watered-down version of the high school that has access to the high school. What I'd like to see happen is us being able to serve ninth graders, currently we only are able to serve tenth, eleventh, and twelfth graders, and by increasing this, we have potential for doing so, we have potential for doing some work-study type programs as well. So this is a relatively minor investment that could really create rewards.
What I like about this approach, and we've had some extensive conversation about other strategies like this, what it does is it also gives the general ed in this building opportunities to have students who may be feeling some challenges get that support, and those teachers and the staff can focus on that core grouping, right? Because we always talk about interventions and enrichment, how do we do that, and how do we slice it up? But if we have the needs met for those core groups, then we can spend some time on some of the enrichment pieces in the core. So you can look at the graphic there, there's a speech language pathologist needed there, and then tutoring support, we have tutoring support program that we want to instill, and then data systems technology. So around achievement gap, one of the things is collecting data, utilizing data, and being able to use data to inform our practice. We recently have a data systems coordinator, and we're looking at the data team, and so that's a piece that we want to look at in terms of how do we support the work of the achievement gap strategy. And then lastly on this slide is the EL academic language specialist. Alphabet's already grant-funded currently, and we want to be able to support that moving forward. Okay? Excellent. Under inclusive teaching and learning, the other focus that was, was early learning priority, and you can see there, one of the, early learning, we've had some really good conversations about how do we support the kids to graduate at the level we want and have them proficient to move, and we know that when we invest at the early ages, it pays off for us at the top end. So our systems leaders thought that, okay, well, let's look at the lower end, and early learning became a priority, and so we're looking at introducing kindergarten paras in all of our schools, and so we've got a recommendation there. We also want to retain the preschool classes that we have currently, so we can support that, and then we have some investments around technology and iPads and things that we need at the lower end, we want to. The other piece around resources, Fountains and Pennell Classroom Libraries, so those are just resources, and PD for K to five, phonics, grammar, reading curriculum, so this is professional development and resources for teachers to be able to utilize at the lower end. And then the last two there, you've got preschool SLP service and preschool coordinator for ISN programming. And then lastly, under the inclusive teaching and learning, the other area, and you know, this came through in our climate surveys around social-emotional is a big piece for us, but it also, I mean, without even collecting the data, this was pronounced from our administrators the last couple of years, they keep saying we need these supports, and we've tried to add some supports, but we still need some supports around that, and you can see there, there's a need for some supports at the guidance, at the middle school level, for counseling supports, and also in terms of the health and sex ed curriculums at the middle school. That's a dual sort of support, because what it does is it helps with the scheduling and gives the flexibility for the classes, but also we need the content to be taught with our, to our students. And then this slide, you'll see on the other slides, we had a category called Other, these were things that were still voiced, but didn't raise the level of our focuses, so we kind of clustered them in here, because we didn't want to take them off the table, we wanted to share with everyone, let you know, but so you can see some of the items that are, were one-offs, that are kind of left off, that are still on the table, so people can actually see what they were, right?
The question was about what the special ed contingency is, that's just money that we would allocate to special ed without any specific item that we would be using it for, but so that it could address whatever type of emerging need comes up. So it could end up being the need for additional staffing within the schools such as para educator, one-on-one para, a special educator specifically, or if we need to use that money to bring in some sort of contracted service to serve the students, or to allow a student to access an external program, it could be any of those things, it's just recognizing the fact that that's an area that is not always easy to predict, and one of the requests that came forward was a contingency that was specifically earmarked for that purpose as opposed to just a broader kind of district-wide contingency, which we've done in the past.
We also received students in year that have special needs that, you know, sometimes need supports of tens and thousands of dollars, and most of the time, it's by legislation that we have to find, so we can't say, oh, we don't have the dollars for it, we have to find the dollars, and usually we do, but we're looking at planning for it in those cases, right? And then we move to the other big rock we have is called Equitable Climate and Culture, right? And under the achievement gap priority under that, one of the programs that we have is Parent University, and we've struggled with that the last couple of years, it's flourished and enrollment of that has increased, and we've usually had grants to be able to subsidize it, and so there was a proposal for forward to say, let's embed this into our regular programming and be able to support the staff and operations of this initiative. We know that there's a direct correlation between the parents that attend these programs and the achievement of their students, a lot of it actually talks about community engagement of parents and their involvement in schools has a direct impact on their achievement, so that's why it's under the achievement priority. Early learning, there are a couple of items that did fall under early learning priority under the Equitable Climate and Culture. EL, EL teacher, there's a need for EL teacher in the system in terms of supporting the early years, we've talked about north-south bus that will enhance the equitable distribution of students, right, and give access, so we wanted to put that in there, and then there's the multilingual liaison piece there of fifteen thousand, which is supports the grants that we have in order to add that position. And restorative, this is a big chunk, restorative practices, and we heard overwhelmingly from both staff, from community members, and from the board around increasing our capacity around restorative practices, and it takes, you know, it's like anything you start, there's a front-loading, and hopefully, my hope, my direction is that we just build capacity so it's within our system, so we don't have to keep seeking external resources, right? It's something that should be built into our system so it becomes part of the toolkit of our educators in our system, but we're at the infancy in terms of that. So we're looking at staff training, using expert consultants that we have in the community to help, more materials and operating expenses for that division. The other piece that we've been talking about for a number of years is alternative to suspension and displacement programs. So this could actually fit under the social-emotional as well too. So if you talk to our administrators, they talk about students and challenges sometimes they have with maladaptive behaviors, and sometimes they need some support and resources for students without having to suspend them, but the only way they can get them out, they get a break sometimes, suspension, so that's kind of ridiculous, they lose instructional time, and so this would be a way to look at a program that we can still engage students, even if they have to be pulled out of their specific classroom, they still get their education, we continue the learning, and then they still have that capacity when they go back. And I would say, I didn't say this at the front end, but these are the numbers that are initially put forward, but we know as we go through the process, there's always a refining in terms of, okay, what can we actually support, what the board can support, and get commitment from the community, and what we can do in terms of looking at how to start different initiatives and programs and build on year by year, right? Middle school practitioners, okay, that's good, it's fine, keep going. And then one of the last categories was around the social-emotional under Equitable Climate and Culture, special education and behavior management expertise, so this was one of the biggest, I would say, areas that we hear consistently and constantly, both from parents, from teachers, and from our administrators for sure. And so they're looking for eleven special education teachers and behavior management experts to distribute throughout the district to support the strategies that are happening in the schools to alleviate those challenges. Elementary social workers and supports, so that fits under the social-emotional, to be able to build that, and you know, we know from our data that we have increasingly social-emotional challenges, and many of our students and parents have challenges that have impact on our students, and sometimes our schools don't have the resources or kind of left on how do we, how do we support these individuals, and they can't even get to the learning, right? So this would help in that area. Special education supports, this is pretty specific around some training that we feel we need to do for our paras to support them in those areas, and also to be able to support things like unified sports, so we can be an inclusive board, if we're going to offer co-curricular and extracurricular for able-bodied or even cognitively challenged, we need to be able to support the other areas as well too. And then the last, once again, under the climate, these are things that kind of didn't really fit directly immediately, but we wanted to recognize that it came through voices through the schools at some level, or through a compensation study. I think Commissioner Carey kind of alluded to some of this in their committee work in terms of work we need to do as a system to balance that out in terms of fairness and equity. And then the sustain our tutor service, we want, that's a great service that we have, we want to sustain that. Temporary staff to manage InfoSnap, that's a software that we have, and then administrative, EL, administrative assistant that was on there as well. Okay? All right, and I'm going to turn it over to Nathan to talk about sustainable finance and facilities.
Thanks, Yama. So again, these items will look familiar as many other ones did because they were part of the large list of requests that we shared with the board at the meeting we held at the B D sparse space, but you can see some of the items have undergone a little bit of transformation either by being collapsed into one request that captures the kind of everything, or in some cases, we went back and refined some of them, but by and large, this is still everything, or just about everything that was on that list. However, I wanted to add, so that we didn't lose sight of it, the significant investment we are making in our, making our facilities here sustainable and developing a budget that bears in mind, we're assuming a lot of debt to do that, and that's a big piece of this as well. So as you can see up there, I mentioned that we're looking at borrowing approximately six point two million dollars in FY twenty, of which approximately four million is, would go toward all of the work that needs to be done, design, of a design nature for the high school, and then the other two point two million would be to support the capital plan that we have for the rest of our buildings. So in total, we'd be talking about six point two million dollars of additional debt next year, that's actually less money than we borrowed this year under the capital plan, where we kind of made a first big investment in doing particularly the Edmonds campus, whereas next year, we just kind of have to finish that off with a relatively smaller scale investment. So I just wanted to point that out, I'm working on the estimate of kind of what do we project that additional debt will cost? So I just wanted to point that out, I'm working on the estimate of kind of what do we project that additional debt will cost. One of the subtle nuances of this, of course, is, for example, this year we borrowed $8 million. We will make only a modest payment toward that debt this year. Most of, but the kind of full debt service for that kicks in, in the budget year we're building. So in essence, even though I'm saying we're borrowing $6.2 million or planning to in FY20, the increase to the budget, our general fund budget that you will see is really driven by the amount of money we borrowed this year, because then we start paying it back. So hopefully, that's, that's clear. So we're, I just wanted to make sure, you know, it's not an itemized new investment, you know, in terms of what came through for people, but it's, it is a new investment that we've all chosen to make in, in the district, and so we didn't want to lose sight of that. That's obviously a big number. I don't know exactly now, but my estimate is it'll probably be on the order of maybe $750,000 of, of debt service. So that is the end of the list, and something we can certainly go back to. But Bonnie, if you want to just go on, I, one slide we didn't get to talk to about, kind of ran out of time at, at B D. I just threw together some benchmarks as general guides for the, for to understand, kind of, put, put some of the numbers in context. As Yao said, the list we provided is a very expansive list, including the vast majority of the budget ideas that were brought forward. And we recognize that the board will review that and determine the extent to which funding it is, is possible. And to aid in that process, I wanted to provide a few general benchmarks so that people can see kind of what 1% of the budget is and can see some of our recent budget history. Another piece that we are not able to fully describe yet, but people start asking about this time of year, is the tax impact. So we do have one of the first key variables. The tax commissioner every year has to publish a letter, and that letter provides the, what will be the dollar yield for the year absent any additional legislative change. So that information was published. The good news is that the dollar yield increased. And that means that for any given level of spending, the tax rate would be lower. Effectively means that a tax rate of $1 statewide would raise more money than it did last year. So whatever your tax rate is, again, whether it's $1, $1.50, whatever, that number will be higher, and therefore, the tax rate can support more spending without increasing. The other major item that was mentioned in the tax commissioner's letter, which is, you know, again, it's a mix of the statutory obligation for the tax commissioner to, to report the dollar yield, but it's also an opportunity to signal to some degree the governor's perspective on what should be done with respect to tax rates. And they spilled a bit of ink talking about the possibility of utilizing some of the, what they consider kind of windfall education fund revenue on supporting a, I think they call it kind of cradle-to-grave program. I, I don't know what their, their word was.
Cradle-to-career.
Cradle-to-career, no, cradle-to-grave. The, here's the key thing, and I've said this before, but I think it bears repeating. To the extent that money from the education fund is used for a purpose other than supporting public education, irrespective of how you feel about that purpose, the effect of taking that money out of the education fund puts upward pressure on the tax rates. Because now that dollar yield doesn't actually generate as much money for the education fund, or rather, the amount of money left in the education fund after they take money out for other purposes is less. And so that's just a key, key element for, I think, this board and, and people in general to understand is that that would have the impact of increasing the, increasing the tax rates, all else being equal. So I wanted to make sure that that was explicit. And on the next slide, you can see something that'll look a little bit familiar from last year, where we highlighted the key variables in the tax estimate. And you can see we have one in green, that is the current dollar yield that's projected for next year, a 4.36% increase in that yield, so that's pretty strong. That's good news. But again, there's three other key variables there that we still have to either wait for in some cases, or in the case of education spending, essentially, it's the product of the budget decisions that the board makes.
So we're, we're at the end. So we're talking about next step. So we've given you, we've done a sort of data dump there, we're giving you a lot of information. So we're open for conversations and then talk about the, the next step in which the board wants to direct us in talking about preparing this budget. You can see there is some information that's missing that we have to wait from the state, but there's still an opportunity to talk about our new investments in other areas as we move forward. So I pass it over to the chair and.
Thank you. I would want to thank you, Nathan, for categorizing these budget needs under the columns that they were such, and that we look forward to and will answer, I think we'll dedicate next Tuesday to that time to be able to give you that feedback. I think it's important for commissioners to be able to either meet with, meet or converse maybe online with Nathan and yourself if they have follow-up questions, so that we are, it is a work session next Tuesday, so come prepared with those questions. Maybe over the next Wednesday, you know, for business days, that we can get some of those questions answered so that we do have a basis. I think those lump sum, you know, the eleven distribution of special ed teachers I know across the district, but it might be, we would want to know some specifics, the schools that need that. And the displacement program, I think we're, we all understand the needs for these type of asks, but, you know, how it would be executed, you know, follow-up questions so that we're making those decisions. Commissioner Bravo.
Thank you. So should we send our questions in advance to Director Lavery?
I think that would help.
Yeah, we, we sort of worked out our protocol for this. If we want to send it all to the chair and then to me, or do you want to send it directly to, to us?
Because that's my question.
Yeah. Why don't you, why don't we all agree to send it to the chair, and then I'll forward it to Director Lavery? Thank you, good question, Commissioner.
Do you want to, can we lay a timeline out then? So then that way, we have some time to, if we have to dig up answers to be able to provide.
What would you suggest, end of business day or Thursday?
Yeah, Tuesday, yeah, end of, end of Thursday would be, would be great.
Yes, you'd have three business days.
Just wondering, that wouldn't, thank you. That wouldn't preclude perhaps necessary flexibility at this meeting we're having next week in case ad hoc questions arise, that sort of thing? I mean, I don't want to be too rigid.
I expect that there will be ad hoc questions, but for us to give you the most robust and accurate information, the more time we have, we can kind of get, dig through the numbers. If there's specific questions that need some calculations or things like that, we'd do that, we'd appreciate that.
Perfect, thank you.
But of course, there'll be, hopefully, the conversation on Tuesday is an opportunity to have a discussion around direction.
Commissioner Curry?
Commissioner Gorman.
Oh, sorry.
So I just want to ask about the schedule because, in my experience, one meeting is not enough for a budget discussion. I don't think we've ever done that. So I'm worried that just that one meeting won't be enough. So is there a contingency plan?
We do have a date stay down in January prior to the final, final approval for extra meetings.
What's the final approval date, the third week in January? I think the city council has to see.
But in our schedule, I think we have the first week and the second week we've scheduled for budget discussions.
The first week of January?
Yeah. If you look on the, is it on this one?
Yep.
The next slide? Yeah. So we have the next week, the eighteenth, and then we've got the eighth and the fifteenth.
And then the city council needs to see it the twenty-first?
Uh, yeah.
The twentieth? And approve it.
Does the city council specifically, I know they have a meeting on the seventh, which we could go there and give them, as we know, kind of a status report. I think it's the, the city council obligation, the city council doesn't vote on it or anything like that. Folks may or may not be aware, but we're obliged to go and talk to them about what our budget is. So obviously, the closer it is to being complete, the more useful it is for them to kind of know what's coming. On the other hand, the closer it is to being complete, the less opportunity they have to influence the results. So there's kind of a give and take there. We could certainly reach out to them and explore a later meeting than the seventh, but the seventh, I think, is their kind of first regular meeting that month when we typically go. But, you know, we can, we can just ask the city council chair when they want to have us.
Yeah, and that was discussed, Commissioner Curry. I had asked Director Lavery about scheduling more meetings, and he felt that that one, the week of the eighteenth would suffice with, you know, the support of the dates in January. So thank you for bringing that up.
I think it's always a question. Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Commissioner Gorman, thank you for.
If you just B C C the board or somehow share the questions as they come in, because there might be some things that some of us hadn't thought about that we might enjoy thinking about a little bit before the meeting on Tuesday.
Absolutely. Thank you, Commissioner Gorman.
I was just going to ask if we have access to these slides that we've just seen. Do we have access to them somewhere?
We will, we will distribute them.
It's there now. It's right there.
It's there now, under.
Where is it?
On the agenda.
Oh, it's under.
Oh, I didn't see, oh.
Yeah, budget update.
The tax commissioner letter is also up there.
Thank you.
Yeah, just, so some things for you to think about in preparation for eventually making a decision. We gave you a couple of questions last time, and Nate got some feedback on that. The, at some point, we don't have the variables to understand tax impact yet, but that's a decision you'll have to make in terms of what's the tax impact or even what's the increase to our total budget around that. Because that, that usually plays a role into, you know, how much of the investments you want to, to put forward. Right? So we'll be able to hopefully, hopefully by next week, we have some more information we can add to it and say, okay, we know this now, so that, that should be helpful. And I'll also say, I put the $5.3 million up. So just if you look at the data in the past few years, at least, we've had, we've done investments from a million to one, to a million five. So just to give you that sort of comparison.
Commissioner Bravo.
But I think it's also important to point out that we've had reductions in those same years. So that wasn't just added to the prior year's budget.
Right. Absolutely. Okay?
Thank you. Thank you very much.
So I'll move back to item A around the policies.
Yes.
And so we've got a number of policies we'd like to, once again, refer to the Policy Governance Committee to review and then bring back to the board. We won't spend time going through all the documents that are there for your purview. You can also visit the Policy Governance Committee. But I will have Secretary Director Lavery speak to the conflict of interest policy briefly, and then Quiklan Director to speak to one. Yeah, go ahead, start.
So I just wanted to, in particular, point out, I know many, many members were able to attend the Policy Governance Committee meeting where I discuss these in a bit more detail. But just to avoid confusion, the conflict of interest policy that we're talking about here is really the conflict of interest in procurement specifically, which is one of the policies that we are required by federal regulation to have, to have, to have adopted by the board in order to be in compliance with our federal grants. And that's just different from what some folks might be familiar with, which is a, there's a V S B A model policy that the boards had in the past related to kind of conflict of interest as it pertains to specifically board member conduct. So there's just a subtle difference there that I wanted to make sure was, was clear to everyone when reviewing these, these policies.
Great.
Okay, good.
Thank you.
And then which one do you want?
I'll do the proficiencies.
Okay. Open it, yep.
D one.
So one of the other policies that's up there for your review is proficiency-based graduation requirements. That's a relatively new policy under V S B A. And really, it's a pretty extensive document that's provided by V S B A that you can look through for your reference. It really goes to the intent of Act 77. So it includes language around the district having a plan for reporting on student proficiencies and some of the other pieces that were part of Act 77, like flexible pathways. So it's a pretty extensive outline of information that's included, and that comes directly from the V S B A website.
So we'll leave the, we'll go through each, they're, they're pretty straightforward, but this is an opportunity for discussion at the Policy Governance, and of course, that's come back here. So we'll leave that for, for people's purview. And pass it on to the board to pass to the P and G Committee.
Great. Thank you. Commissioner Wick?
I still have one more area.
Yep. No, I was just saying, acknowledging, Commissioner Wick, you'll accept all those.
Oh, absolutely. And just to be clear, Nathan came to the committee meeting last week and already reviewed it with us. So, and I would even consider this to be a first reading of these policies because we've just published them. So it's very likely that next time we meet in January, it'll be second reading and adoption.
Great. Thank you, Commissioner Wick. Commissioner Fisher?
Commissioner Wick, we reviewed all of those.
Nathan, any of these that we didn't review?
You might have not reviewed the, the ones I brought from Stephanie.
The proficiency base, so D one.
The ones that I, I went over at that meeting was F one travel reimbursement, then the conflict of interest policy, the capital assets, and the capital assets policy. And then one of the, the fourth one that I went over at that meeting is actually on tonight for second reading.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying, Commissioner Fisher.
So.
I have a very sharp memory.
So then C four, C six, and D one, we'll need to review. Yep. C four. Great. Thank you for bringing that to our attention. Okay. Next is.
Okay. So just to finish up the superintendent's report, the last item was good news. And I wanted to spend a little, oh, Tracy's gone, that's too bad. The, one of the good news is this last week, we had the aviation open house at the airport for the program. And what an amazing program that we have. And so we're going to work on doing a better job of publicizing that. I was singing the praises to this morning at this superintendent's meeting to try to engage the districts to see the value in this. There is such a high need from airlines and airports for students who have this ticket. And we get calls from companies to our program asking for students. We had a number of students that went on a field trip just this past week, on a field trip. And the person that invited them were willing to pay them to do, to do practicum work because they have such a need. So we're trying to encourage people, if you want a good-paying job, you can go anywhere in the nation. There are jobs all over, and the staff we have there are well-experienced and dedicated and really supportive of our school. Right now, we have two students in the program, and hopefully, we can build that capacity up. I would like, I would say that during orientation, there were a couple of students that came out from other districts that came to see the program. So hopefully, the word is getting out. And I may, in speaking through the chair, maybe we hold one of our meetings at the site and give the board an opportunity to see all our planes and helicopters and things that we have and hear a little bit about the program before we start boarding. So I lay that to you. So those are good news, that was great to see that. And we're the only one in, in the state, and one of three in New England, and one of the other ones are closing down. So the need is great for, so if you know students out there looking for a career path and certain dollars in here for sure as well. So thank you for that. And the last good news piece is our late semester program tomorrow night. I've got a special event. It's an arts event, so anyone who's interested and has the time, starts at 5:30. And you can see it on our, online, it's posted, advertised, and it's on the good news item as well, too. So we look forward to that.
Yes, Commissioner Bravo.
Is the aviation program full?
No.
No.
Open.
We need more students.
Need more students, yeah.
Yeah.
And they are really good-paying jobs.
They're really, they're really good-paying jobs, really good-paying jobs. Yeah, I was thinking of, you know, maybe going through the program.
Thank you. Commissioner Bravo.
Oh, yes, thank you. Could you remind us where the V C L final presentation is tomorrow?
Yes. It's at the.
St. Joe's. It's at St. Joe's.
The community center.
The former St. Joe's.
Let me send, we'll, we'll send a communication to all board members for that to make sure we have it right. Trying to look at my calendar to see the location, but we'll send an email.
I can afford it right now.
Okay.
Yep. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks for asking that.
Great.
All right. And can I go on?
Yes.
Okay. Next item is superintendent's report. Okay. Next item is Superintendent Monitor Report, and we've got the Financial Conditions and Activities 2.3. Another board has, uh, has received it previously, so we will just highlight, uh, pieces and then hopefully present it to you to receive.
Hi, folks. So, uh, this monitor report's also related to, uh, kind of the financial operations of the district and, um, one of the ver, uh, items I think on here, and I'm just pulling it up on my own well, make sure I'm in the same place, I did wanna point out. Can I just look it over here for a second? Okay. Stand by for one moment.
Go to page six. Just scroll down.
Okay. I think there it is.
Page three.
Hmm? This one?
The, um, one that I just wanted to point out that's not a major, uh, there's no issue here or anything, but I just wanted to flag it again was the limitation number three because it's come up in the context of the surplus money that we had and one of the limitations that we have in place is that the superintendent's not to use any long-term reserves, which, um, again, technically speaking, I wanna point out, we don't have any long-term reserves. The long-term reserves or establishment of a reserve fund is something that you have to go to the voters to do. So, at some level, we're not at risk of ever being in violation of this until we establish some reserves, but it might, again, that's just one of those things I wanted to, to keep kind of putting it out there. I know it's always a challenge to figure out when the time is right to do something like that and, um, that's, you know, ultimately up to, to the board, but that's one of those types of, uh, tools that boards can use, whether it's saving money for future capital investments or for kind of tax stabilization is, uh, sometimes here like of a tax stabilization reserve, which essentially means setting aside money for a rainy day so that you can access it, um, when you would rather use that, that source of money as opposed to going to the taxpayers. So, those are examples of how long-term reserves can be used. You do need to go to the voters and I just think it's worth the board continuing to be aware of that option and, uh, perhaps when the time is right, having a, a deeper discussion about possibly establishing them.
Good. Thank you very much. So, I present this, uh, report for board to receive.
Commissioner Fisher.
So, um, thank you Superintendent O'Bang and Director Lavery. Um, a lot of the, uh, comments here reference the last financial audit, FY16. Um, was there an FY17 audit?
Yeah, I think actually, um, I could have, I should have updated that particular reference on, on number three, although I think most of the others probably reference FY17's audit. Um, and... So, they should, unless the wrong, it's possible that the wrong, uh, report is actually posted.
I think that's the case.
Here, which looks, actually, I'm looking at it right now and it looks like, it says 2.3 monitoring final 2017, so it looks like this is actually not the most current report. Although, I can say with confidence that my, uh, discussion of number three remains the same. So, um, so, but, uh, but actually, there's an important point that Commissioner Fisher makes even when you see the 2018 monitoring report, which is there are, just because of the timing of when we're doing this report, there's some updated information and in some cases, um, I discuss the, what we expect to see as part of the 2018 audit, but that audit is not complete yet, so obviously there's no 2018 audit to cite at this time. Um, one possibility, you know, as we kind of determine what reporting schedule makes sense, would be to delay this report until we have that other important piece of information completed. That's something for the board to consider. This was the schedule we had now, so we produced it with the best information we have, although again, the one that's actually posted online looks like it's not the, um, the most recent one. So, uh, probably makes sense in this context just to delay for another month, right?
Thank you, Director Lavery. Um, so I would, uh, propose, I know we did send out the document previously and board members have seen it, but given that hasn't been posted, um, I would withdraw it and bring it back next month.
You didn't, no. Just for clarification, Superintendent O'Bang.
I'm sorry, uh, Superintendent O'Bang, you said you sent the correct 2018 document?
I'm pretty sure Bonnie would have sent it in the package, uh, about a week or two ago. Will we send it?
So, would you, would you recommend, you're gonna bring it back for approval or do you, what do you think about Director Lavery suggesting that we hold on it until after the FY18 audit?
No, I would bring the current one now because I think what, the board probably needs to have a discussion around. Once you've gone through the cycle of the policies, um, and then you look at the timetable, you may wanna reorganize the timetable for not just one-off, but just look at what's happened, the time of year and what would be the best timing for the different, um, policies. I'd rather do a whole package like that. And it might be something we do at a retreat and we can facilitate that or something, right?
Great. Thank you, Superintendent O'Bang and Director Lavery. All right. Next on the agenda is the second reading policy changes. Commissioner Wick?
Oh, thank you, Chair Wall. Um, with the permission of the chair, I'll, um, manage this portion.
Yes.
Great. So, we've got, uh, four policies up for second reading tonight. Um, what I'd like to do, unless anyone objects, is let's take, um, item 10D first, Student Transportation. This came up for first reading a couple of months ago when the superintendent published it and gave us an overview, and we have also discussed this in committee without objection. So, what I'd like to do on item 10D, which is Student Transportation, also known as C3, I would like to, um, uh, move that we waive the reading and, uh, accept the resolution as presented. And I'd ask for a second, if there's any out there. Commissioner. Oh, well. Commissioner Ohwell seconded. Any discussion? If I may, I'll say seeing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No opposed? Any abstentions? None. Okay, we're done with 10D. Um, let's move to 10C, Animal Dissection. Again, same drill as in 10D with one minor twist. So, uh, this came before us as a full board a couple of months ago. The committee did look at it and we generally thought the policy was, was very good and we have no objections. However, um, I would like to defer momentarily to Commissioner Fisher as, um, he had, uh, an objection which the, the committee, Policy and Governance Committee, uh, agreed with. So, I'll, I'll defer to Commissioner Fisher to present that to us.
Thank you, Commissioner Wick. Um, so Commissioner Carey spurred me to actually look at the law that this refers to and the statute, uh, says that the policy must include the procedures. And this policy says the superintendent will develop procedures and the district team will develop procedures. So, I would ask that, uh, Superintendent, you just go back and review the law. You know, I'm not a lawyer, but it, it seemed clear to me that the procedure should be in here.
So, I think on that note, um, I think we'd, we'd ask that the leadership take a, take a look at that and see if there are any procedures that need to be developed with the...
So, the, um, we looked at it a little bit differently in terms of, uh, some of these pieces. One of the things that we wanted to ensure for all these policies that we had, uh, the board's eyes on it. Um, the, most of all, these policies have a level of procedures or, or operational procedures that we're developing. Um, I know the legislation talks about being attached, so there's two ways we can do. We can, we can say yes, we will attach any procedures with the policy, so it's within one, but we also have, um, a nomenclature and a classification that we're developing aligned with, uh, procedures. So, we could do it that way. Or, um, if you want us to remove this and bring it back as a package with the procedures, so you can review the procedures, we could do it that way as well.
Commissioner Fisher, do you wanna speak to that?
I'm okay if the procedures, thank you, allocate, if the procedures exist and you reference them, that's fine.
So, I think as a result, unless there's any major objection to deferring this to January's regular board meeting, that was the wish of the Policy and Governance Committee, just to give it a, one more look, see.
Okay.
Okay. So, that's what we'll do. So, we'll take no action tonight on 10C. Any, okay. I think we're, you're okay. Okay. Thank you. We'll move on to 10B, which is, uh, the second reading of the New Voices Policy. First reading was last month. Commissioner Pillsbury, you, uh, you had your hand up.
To move it.
Oh, okay. So, uh, okay, to that end, I'll, I'll, if I may, make a motion to approve, to waive the reading and adopt the New Voices Policy as presented. Is there a second?
I will second.
Commissioner Pillsbury, any dis, any remaining discussion? I will say seeing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Any abstentions? None. Okay, the motion carries. And finally, the last thing on our agenda tonight, uh, under my little piece of the evening before adjournment, is 10A, Hiring and Treatment of Staff, which would be new policy 2 dot 2D, as in Delta. And, um, what's on Board Docs, as you as a board all know, got very briefly amended as a result of a conversation that the superintendent and I had over email. I discussed it with Commissioner Fisher and I circulated to you all, uh, a very modest amendment to this policy, which, um, makes the policy less restrictive, which means we can, under Robert's rules, still deem this to be a second reading and have the right, in my opinion, to adopt it. And essentially, what we've done is 2 dot 2D, uh, as we had proposed it last time, it applied to principals, assistant principals, directors, and senior directors. Um, however, the superintendent, I, I think rightly so, suggested that perhaps not all or none, you can tell me Superintendent O'Bang, either not all or none of the directors or the senior directors are licensed educators. Could you just help me understand? Is it none of them are or not all of them are?
Um, none, none of them are, are required for those roles.
Okay. So, to that end, um, because the board clearly has the legal authority to approve all licensed positions in the district, but frankly, uh, may or may not have, uh, much sway over how the superintendent chooses to hire his, uh, unlicensed, non-licensed folks. We've, we, Commissioner Fisher and I will be proposing, which is up to discussion. Everyone vote their conscience here. We're proposing together, I think it's fair to say, that we'll present this with the words, um, directors and, uh, senior directors stricken, and you all have a copy of that, which I'm looking at now. So, what you wanna strike is assistant, I'm sorry, district senior director or senior director is gone and the word "or" is inserted between building leader and assistant building leader. And so, and I see some kind of quizzical faces because it, it did not come up in our committee meeting, it came up after, so that's why I think we, we should have a little discussion on this. Um, but in any event, Commissioner Fisher and I, I believe it's fair to say, will co-introduce, co-move that we waive the reading and adopt this policy as amended. And I would, uh, open it up to discussion and I will call on folks. Commissioner Ohwell?
What one of our senior directors is not licensed as an educator? I mean, they all have to be. You have to be. Well, yeah, okay, but...
See, that's the problem.
Yeah.
I do not have an educator's license. Technically, my driver's license also expired, but...
Don't tell anyone that.
Right, but most of your education leaders, all your principals and, and...
Yeah, we're not talking about principals.
What?
Yeah, we, yeah, we weren't talking about principals.
Just building leader and assistant building leader. The rule would still apply, if I may, to principals and assistant principals, which I think was the most urgent concern, given that there are three interim positions, uh, up for permanent hire. Other discussion? Commissioner Barlow?
Well, my discussion isn't about your amendments, but, um, I'm still bothered by this restriction being applied to interims. It seems like there are circumstances that could arise where the superintendent would have to, um, hire interim building administrators without, um, the luxury and the time, uh, needed to do this sort of process. So, I would suggest that we also strike interim, uh, from this policy.
Great question. I'm sorry, I hadn't, I had glossed over, didn't mention how we attempted to accommodate that in committee and it's, it's reflected there in the parenthetical, where it says a superintendent shall not essentially hire these folks without this process, except with prior board approval. So, in other words, if there's what I'll call an emergency circumstance, all the super would need to do is convene the board and say, listen, here's why I don't think we, um, should be following that procedure. We need a quicker decision than that. I'm looking for your blessing. And so, that's how we've attempted to address it. Commissioner Barlow?
Thank you.
Commissioner, Superintendent O'Bang?
Um, thank you for considering that and I appreciate that you, uh, took my reflections on that piece. I think the, um, the interim piece gets a little tricky, even convening the entire board. There are times where, well, getting the board together at a, it would be an emergency meeting, I guess it wouldn't even be a special meeting, right? It'd be, um, so I'm just wondering if you can think about that. Um, it could be, I mean, I don't wanna tell the board, um, you could have approval through the, the chair, which is a lot quicker in situations. Um, and also, there are situations that come up that are anticipated, that you have to put someone in and also replace that person. Um, you know, there have been situations where you had interims for interims because of just the way life works for people, right? So, I, I would want the board to at least have some more dialogue around that interim piece, just to figure out how we can logistically, um, um, make that a little bit easier when there's, um, you know, it, it probably won't happen that often, but when it does, you wanna be able to be nimble and be able to respond to, um, the situation.
Thank you, Superintendent O'Bang. Um, I appreciate that. Here's how I'd like to run the deliberation here and it's consistent with Robert's rules. It would be, um, I would like to select commissioners who...
Commissioner Fisher.
Absolutely. I'm just about to, so, so, Robert's rule suggests that one way to do it is to allow commissioners to speak in favor and then against and then in favor and against to have a balanced discussion and give everybody not more than two bites at the apple, the theory being that you're trying to persuade, if you will, uh, others to, uh, you know, follow where you're gonna go here. So, we'll set a two-minute limit as well, so, and we won't, uh, take a second person speaking until everyone has had their first bite at the apple to speak. So, having said that and having just heard Commissioner Barlow, who, uh, on balance, I guess with the current language, may be against the proposal, I'll go to Commissioner Fisher.
Uh, thank you, Commissioner Wick. Um, so Superintendent O'Bang, I understand that, you know, the desire to, to move quickly. Um, I've been in organizations where the term "acting" is used when there's some urgency. So, what I've seen in this district is that the interims are there for months, if not a year, entire school year. So, my personal take is that, um, I, I do think that this should apply to interims and if there's a need for speed, um, that we leverage acting. And I think that, uh, as a board member, I would be willing to get on the phone for a special emergency board meeting to, uh, approve an interim, um, in, in a couple of days.
Thank you, Commissioner Fisher. Would anyone like to speak against the motion? Who's not spoken yet? Okay. Anyone else like to speak for the motion? Who's not spoken yet? Okay. Well, um...
Commissioner Wick?
I'm sorry.
Commissioner Carey?
I guess I'd just like to state for the record that I will not be supporting the motion because I do not support the direction of the district in complicating the hiring process with the added cost of staff and students. Because what I've heard from this board is the priority for putting money into direct education. And, um, I've lived through the district involving parents and staff and... the district involving parents and staff and seen the cost impact and the complications, so I will not be supporting the motion.
Thank you, Commissioner Curry. Is there anyone who'd like to speak for the motion? Commissioner Boncher?
Just in speaking to a principal at one of our schools who started out as an interim principal for 18 months, that interim principal had a thorough interview process and was interviewed by the entire school, not just a few members of the school, but the entire school. And I would urge, an interim principal is still at the school for a year or a certain amount of time where they affect the families that are there and the staff that work there. The staff work intimately with an interim principal, so that's my argument for the motion.
Thank you, Commissioner Boncher. Any Commissioners wish to speak against who haven't spoken yet? No. Any for who haven't spoken yet? No. Okay, so now, if you've spoken once and you are for the motion, anyone want to speak who's already spoken? No. Okay. If you're against the motion and you've already spoken once and you want to speak a second time, now's your chance. Seeing none. Okay. Discussion is concluded, and we'll take the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
Okay, two opposed. Any abstentions?
No.
One abstention. The motion carries. I'll pass the, I'll go back to Commissioner, Chair Wall, thank you so much, appreciate that, Chair Wall.
Thank you. So that leads us to the conclusion of our meeting. Superintendent O'Bang, is there anything?
That's it.
Okay, great. Then I make a motion to adjourn.
I move to...
What? It's not 1:00 yet.
I know. I was very happy.
Surely we can draw some more...
Thank you. Second?
I second that motion.
Thank you. We are adjourned. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chair Wall.